Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:30. I will call the Tuesday, November 5th, 2019 meeting of the Superior Common Council order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Van Sickle.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessey.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Sutherland.
Here.
Counselor Kern.
Here.
Counselor Dahlbeck.
Here.
And Counselor Radke.
Here.
We have a quorum.
First item is approval of the minutes from the October 15th regular council meeting.
Motion is by Counselor Bender. The second is by Counselor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 5.1 is a public hearing regarding the 2020 general fund budget.
If there is no objection from the council, I will open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak in the public hearing for the 2020 general fund budget? Would anybody like to speak in the public hearing? Since public hearing, counselors, any of you like to speak in the public hearing? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve the 2020 general fund budget. Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Dahlbeck. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
5.2 is a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division to approve the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan, authorizing staff to submit plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
If there's no objection from the council, I will open this public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan? Would anybody like to speak in the public hearing? Counselors, would anybody like to speak in the public hearing? Counselor Van Sickle.
Just to record my abstention, please.
Counselor Van Sickle records abstaining in the vote. If... Last call, would anybody like to speak in the public hearing? Very well, I will then entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessey, second by Counselor Bender to approve the resolution.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 6 is the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Ludwig, second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 7.1 is the Human Resources Committee recommendations from their October 21st meeting.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 7.2 is the Public Works Committee recommendations from their October 16th meeting. There is one correction just in the... Relating to item 2, it says that the main motion was amended and carried unanimously, but Counselor Dahlbeck did vote in opposition of that. So we'll just make that correction in a minute.
The business of the Public Works Committee. Motion is by Counselor Van Sickle, the second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.1, I am recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
Second.
Motion is by Counselor Sutherland, second by Counselor Dahlbeck. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I am recommending approval of an original Class B beer and Class C wine application by Katie's Family Restaurants, 4927 East Second Street, for the remainder of their license period.
The motion is by Counselor Van Sickle, the second by Counselor Fennessey. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I'm recommending approval of a one-day cabaret license for Tavern 105 for an event on January 18th.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.4, Assistant Finance Director Putz is recommending approval of amendment to the professional service agreement with Tom Anderson.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Kern, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Counselor Fennessey?
Counselors, I just want to let you know, I referred this... You know, last meeting, we referred this back, just to get some clarification on the... There was a termination clause on either side, and there is. It's a 90-day termination that either side can do. I did talk to Tom Anderson, and he's totally fine with it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
8.5, Public Works Director Janigo is recommending approval of contract amendment with SEH for construction phase engineering services related to the reconstruction of two large culvert crossings of Micus and Mock Road with an estimated amended fee of $56,200.
Motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, the second by Counselor Van Sickle. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Director Janigo is recommending approval of Amendment 2 with Jack Rabbit Cleaning through December 31st, 2020, for cleaning of the... Cleaning services of the Municipal Services Building.
The motion is by Counselor Fennessey, the second by Counselor Sutherland.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
8.7, Director Janigo is recommending approval to waive the bidding requirements and purchase potassium acetate de-icing chemical from Cryotech De-icing Technology via the Minnesota State Bid Contract at a price of 3.85 cents per gallon. I think you have a correction.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, the second by Counselor Bender. Before we proceed with the regular discussion, counselors, we have an amendment we're going to need to suggest. Mr. Carlson will explain. We have to adjust the price.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The 3.85 per gallon listed on the agenda is correct for the product price. However, there's a per gallon charge for freight and delivery to us of 59 cents. So delivered to our door, the per gallon price is $4.44.
So that...
Just wanted to make sure that was clear before your vote.
So that it's clear, that's what...
Was that 59 cents?
59 cents.
59 cents for freight and delivery. You add it to 3.85, you have $4.44.
So we'll need to amend the price.
To amend the price to $4.44. Second.
The motion is by Counselor Kern, the second by Counselor Bender to amend. Shannon, you have the price? We'll assume she has it. Discussion on the amendment, let me just... I'll just dispense with that quick. Is there discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. The main motion, Counselor Sutherland.
Yes, I had a question on this, and I should have reached out for you before the meeting, and I didn't get a chance to. I apologize. Is... Was this the best price while shopping around for this particular item?
It was. This was purchased under the Minnesota State Bid, so the state goes out and does a lot... Does that competitive purchasing, looking and trying to get the lowest price possible. So we benefit by the buying power of the entire state of Minnesota through this one contract. They have a lot more purchasing power than we would individually if we went to vendors. Anecdotally, also, our Public Works Supervisor also went out and checked a few other prices, just going direct, and they were more costly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Fennessey?
Just for clarification with that, if we're falling under the Minnesota net state bid, does that also include the 59 cents per gallon, or is the Minnesota net state bid only the product price?
Nope. The delivery charge is part of the state bid contract.
Okay, and that still falls in there?
Yep.
Were there no Wisconsin companies that offered this, or was it...
I don't believe so. It's a very limited...
Right.
Very limited suppliers for this chemical.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, follow up that question. Mr. Carlson, does the Wisconsin Department of Transportation use potassium acetate?
I don't believe they do at this point. MinDOT has been using it to great success, but I don't believe WISDOT has utilized it as of yet.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
8.8, Planning Director Cirque is recommending approval to waive the building permit fees for the rehabilitation of a five-unit residence for Harbor House Crisis Shelter at 1022 Harrison.
Second.
Motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
8.9, Director Cirque is recommending approval of small business grant applications and development agreements for Katie's Atasca Bay Family Restaurant at 4927 East Second Street, Corner Store 300 LLC, 3802 East Second Street, and Scott Wallen CPA, 2221 East Fifth Street.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Van Sickle, the second by Counselor Fennessey. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Counselor Sutherland.
I just want to clarify a couple things here on this. How much do we allocate a year again? Was it $50,000 a year for this program?
For the total program?
Yep.
No, we're looking at probably, I think, 2 to 250 for the program?
A year.
Yes.
A year, so...
The 50,000 is a max on what folks can...
That's what it is, the maximum, what each person can use.
Yes, sir.
So this is the first payments that we're seeing come through with this program?
Yep.
And this... Thank you, Esther. And this start in January 1, this starts over again, right?
It'll start in our calendar year, and I think we're going to... Just kind of seeing, and don't want to editorialize too much, but I think we're going to be talking about a couple of tweaks at Plan Commission on this, and nothing major, but we will be probably looking at that. But we'll be bringing it back to the council if there are some changes that we do.
This is probably one of the best things I've seen in a while come through on our agenda, and whoever brought this forward, counselors that worked on this, Counselor Kern is one of them that worked on this, and all the department heads and everyone that worked on this. This is... We're $50,000 back in the small business pockets. I think it's awesome.
Yep.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselors, I just want to add, you want to look closely at these applications. As Director Cirque mentioned, we will be proposing some changes. Some of those will be... Technical might be too strong a word, but tweaks about caps, dollar amounts, policies within it. So look closely at who's applying, how much they're applying for, the application, the process. Just please pay close attention, because we're going to have some... We're going to fix the minutia, and so it'll be some complicated decisions to be made in the next year. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Assistant Police Chief Markin is recommending approval to designate unit 2, a 2014 Ford Police Interceptor Utility, as surplus city property to be eligible for auction to the highest bidder.
Second.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, the second by Counselor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Parks Recreation and Forestry Director Kadat is recommending approval of the construction agreement with Gardner Builders Duluth for the next phase of the dock upgrades at the Barker's Island Marina in the amount of $484,177.31.
Second.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Fennessey. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
8.12, Director Kadat is recommending approval of construction project oversight services for the next phase of the Barker's Island Dock upgrades to AMI Consulting Engineers for the proposed not-to-exceed amount of $47,700.
Second.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Counselor Bender, I believe, has some business by public... Or business by counselors.
Yes, but if you, Counselor, did you want to talk about the football team? Yes. Okay, he will first.
Okay.
Mr. Radke?
All right. So the Superior Spartans varsity football team just beat Pulaski last week, so now they're going to DC Everest this Saturday to play... I forgot what the team name was.
Kekana.
Kekana, thank you. And now, if they beat that, then they'll have two more playoff games, and if they win those two, they will go to Camp Randall Stadium in W Madison to play for D2 State.
Sounds great.
Great.
Counselor Bender, did you have anything else?
Yes, I did. Yes?
Yes, I did. I just hit the wrong button. So I'm going to take us back to a couple administrations ago. When I was first on the council, I had brought up about how high taxes were in the city of Superior, and what I was told at that time was, "Well, yeah, but you get so much for it." You get garbage, and the state at that time had a contract for recycling, and so that we were in charge of that. And I thought, "Well, yeah, you know, that does sound right." The reason I'm bringing this up is I got a call from a constituent. So I got a call from a constituent a couple days ago, and the constituent said that she's a single person, person next to her is a single person, person next to her is a single person, and they don't have much garbage, they don't have much recycling. And what they could do, if they wanted to, would be to... They could combine their garbage, and they could combine their recycling, but they're still... Each one of them has to pay for it. And this, to the person who called me, didn't seem fair, and it doesn't seem fair to me either, for a single person in that case. And this morning, I had a discussion with a number of landlords, and landlords are upset. If a landlord has a sixplex, he gets three garbage cans, and he gets three recycling bins, and he pays for six of each. So that's all I wanted to bring up. It's not fair. Life isn't fair, and recycling isn't fair. And a number of years ago, when it first came up about that we were going to have to pay for garbage and pay for recycling, I had brought up... I had made a PowerPoint presentation called Talking Trash, and I had brought up about, here are things that they do in other communities, like they burn garbage. Like Minneapolis, they have giant trucks that come right in and dump it, and it's all burned and stuff like that. And that also, we had had the man from Pay as You Throw come and speak at a city council meeting, and Pay as You Throw means you buy garbage bags, and you pay, depending on how... You know, you buy the garbage bag, and so you pay for that, and that might be another way. And of course, that idea didn't go very far at that time. But again, this isn't fair to a single person or to landlords, because I know not only one landlord, a couple landlords have spoken to me about the exact same problem, that is, they have a sixplex, and they get three garbage cans and three recycling bins, but pay for six of each. And that's it. That's all I got.
Well, thank you, Counselor. I'd encourage you to raise at least some of these policy questions with the Finance Committee that's committed, that is historically handled.
Believe me, I will.
Unfortunately, I would tell you, the administration's at least a little bit handicapped in helping you develop that policy, where our Finance Department is still a little bit light, but especially if you approach it around the time of the new year, I think we'd be happy to help at least explore some of those policies.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. I said I would bring it up.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors have business?
Item 11.1 is a resolution of the Common Council of City of Superior approving the forms of assignment and assumption of lease agreements for the Hallett Dock Company projects.
Second.
Motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
11.2 is a resolution of the Common Council approving the forms and assignment and assumption of development agreements for the Hallett Dock Company projects.
Second.
Motion is by Counselor Olson, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 12.1 is an ordinance introduced by Counselor Fennessey amending the City Code Chapter 86, Section 16, smoking prohibited. You did receive an email from Pat Mccone... I thought it was Pat, but... From the American Cancer Society today, and you have a hard copy at your desk.
Motion approved? Second.
The motion is by Counselor Fennessey, the second by Counselor Olson, I believe. Is there discussion? Counselor Fennessey?
Counselors, this has been kind of a long road. We... I think it's been to Parks and Rec four times, and then Wisconsin Point Committee at least once, and the gist of this, it started as a discussion of eliminating tobacco and smoking near our playgrounds, and then it slowly kind of grew into eliminating all city parks in Wisconsin Point, Barker's Island, and it quickly became this ginormous, you know, ban, and the Parks and Rec Commission kind of went full circle and kind of brought it back to the original intent of the... Of what I was bringing forward, and it basically just eliminates smoking and tobacco use near our city playgrounds, playground equipment and pavilions. So it... I think it makes a lot of sense that, you know, we've created these spaces that kids and families are encouraged to go, and what this would do is this would just make smoking prohibited in around playground equipment. You guys have the full ordinance in front of you. The... What's in red is the amendments to it. It accomplished two things. It eliminated the ability to use tobacco products near playgrounds, but then it also kind of cleaned up our existing smoking ordinance to kind of get with the times, to include e-cigarettes, you know, vape pens, e-hukas, e-pipes, you know, that type of thing that we're seeing now. So it kind of accomplishes two things. It cleans up the ordinance and then also adds in this component near playground equipment. I do want to make two super minor amendments, and these are actually at the recommendation from the internal policy employees at the American Lung Association, where it's... And I apologize, I can find the... What part that is? I just printed out the one page. It's in the ordinance where it defines what smoke is, and the... If someone finds it before me, let me know.
It's 259. Under the definition of smoking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So throughout the whole ordinance, it talks about smoking, and in this definition, it talks about smoke. So what they asked, just to make it the same thing throughout, is that we strike out the word "smoke" and replace that with "smoking." And then the other part is the very last sentence in that same paragraph. It says electronically... Electronic delivery device. Just to make it a little more clear, just take out that, so it's not limiting it to just an electronic delivery device, and just replace that with this. So it would read, instead of reading electronic delivery device does not include, it would just read this does not include. I don't think this changes the meaning of this at all. It just more cleans it up, makes it a little more, you know, continuous throughout the whole thing. So if... So I'll make an official motion to strike out the word "smoke," replace that with "smoking," strike out the electronic delivery device, and replace that with the word "this." Yeah, I think I understand the motion and the amendment. Counselor, do you know of any other place where the word "smoke" appears? I don't think it does, and that's why... Yeah, this was the only one where it's referred to as "smoke" instead of "smoking."
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
The motion is to amend by Counselor Fennessey, the second by Counselor Sutherland, to change the word "smoke" and to replace the words "electronic delivery device" with the word "this." This is in... I'm not going to try and identify the paragraph, but are there questions about... Are there questions or discussion regarding this amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment? I'm sorry, Counselor Dahlbeck?
Yes, I would like for someone to explain enforcement, please.
I think that's a question more for the main motion. We'll entertain that in just a moment. Right now, this is a discussion about these word changes.
Oh, no, excuse me. All right.
Questions about the amendment?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Counselor Fennessey, you still have the floor.
I'm done.
Okay. Counselor Dahlbeck?
I've been asking enforcement, and I would like someone to explain how it's going to be enforced, and if it's going to be enforced, is there going to be a fine, and what is the fine going to be?
Have you read the ordinance?
Yeah. The fine is right there. It's right in the last page.
Okay, so... All right, the penalties, Counselor, under paragraph F.
I see that, Mayor. But not... Oh, excuse me. Not everybody is aware out there in the city as to what it's going to be, and they would like to know about enforcement, and the fine is $500. How is it going to be enforced?
That... I... Police Chief, do you want to try and answer that? My guess is that it's... Police will respond to complaints. We have to get him a microphone.
Try to be loud. So I review the enforcement, just like any others to the ordinance. A couple things could happen. Officer could be at a park or at an event and observe somebody in violation, and therefore could take enforcement action. The other one would be somebody calling 911 to report it, and we investigate it. I wasn't part of the committee that reviewed it. I don't know if they considered Cold Compliance or Parks and Rec having the ability to fine as well or issue that ordinance, but from the Police Department's perspective, that's how we would handle it.
Okay, you're saying if there was a police officer sitting there and seeing it, but how are you going to enforce it if someone calls and says, "I see somebody smoking a cigarette"? How are you going to prove that they were smoking that cigarette? I mean, they're going to get rid of it or whatever. How are you going to prove that? So you're going to have a hard time, right?
Well, certainly, that's obviously difficult. Somebody who gives a signed written statement does authorize an officer to take enforcement action out of ordinance violation. Typically, in those cases, though, I think that would probably be either the officer observes it, somebody starts another cigarette up, or it's one of those where we make contact and warn them and let them know about the ordinance that exists, and that they're caught again, that could result in enforcement.
Thank you.
Counselor Ludwig?
First of all, I'd like to state that even though I'm on the Parks, Recs and Forestry Commission, I wasn't at the meeting where the proposed ordinance changes were vetted at length. Ironically, I was with a family dealing with a non-timely death of my brother-in-law, who passed away at age 67 from lung cancer related to smoking. The purpose... You know, what's the purpose of us prohibiting smoking within certain areas of our parks? It isn't to punish smokers. It isn't to, you know, like, like I got you, you know. It's rather, it's to promote healthy recreational environment for our residents and visitors. A healthy environment free from toxic smoke vapors and cigarette butt litter. As I stated at the October 24th Parks and Rec Commission meeting, I feel the proposed addition to prohibit smoking within 50 feet of playground equipment, pavilions and shelters, it's a good start, but does not go far enough to provide the healthy, smoke-free and cigarette butt-free environment that we want in our community. What about picnic tables? You know, I've driven around to the different parks in, down Webster Dream Park. There's the picnic table that, it's probably not in the 50-foot area, but it's just right beyond. You know, kids can run there within a few seconds and people can be around that picnic table smoking. It's not a healthy environment to be eating at a picnic table while people are smoking. What about our park benches? There are park benches that sit right around the basketball courts. Anyone, you know, playing those basketball, tennis would be breathing in that smoke if a smoker was sitting on those benches. Counselor Vanceickel said she went by the skate park because the skate park was another area. There are benches right within that skate park. You know, and we've, that skate park is used by, what, pre-teens, mostly teenagers? You know, and we don't want them smoking. So, you know, what about saying no one can smoke within, you know, 50 feet, 50 feet of those things? What about bleachers? How many times has a non-smoker, I have been sitting on bleachers and a smoker comes and I have to put up with the smoke from the non-smokers? I should not have to leave that space because I do not, you know, want to breathe in the air. So, picnic tables, park benches, basketball and tennis courts, skateboard park, ice skating rink, bleachers, these are all places where people congregate and have the right to breathe healthy air, free from the toxins of cigarette smoke. Therefore, I propose an amendment to add picnic tables, park benches, basketball and tennis courts, skateboard park, ice skating rinks and bleachers to the list of places that prohibit smoking within 50 feet.
Counselor, so you made a motion to amend?
I did.
I apologize, I did not hear the whole amendment. In fact, ironically, I was asking the city.
I will read it again.
The city.
Can you?
Do you have it written down?
Do you have it written down?
I do have it written down.
Can I have that?
So, yes.
Yeah, read it one more time.
Actually, Counselor Ludwig, if you bring it up here, we'll take the amendment.
What?
I'm going to read this. Counselor Ludwig moves to amend the motion to add, or to amend the ordinance to add picnic tables, park benches, basketball and tennis courts, the skateboard park, ice skating rinks and bleachers to the list of places that prohibit smoking within 50 feet. And that was seconded by Counselor Vanceickel. Counselor Ludwig, does that accurately describe your amendment?
Yes.
Is it clear where that would fall in the ordinance?
Okay. Discussion on this amendment? Counselor Sutherland.
I don't know if this is the right time to be making that amendment and for us to be making that decision because I feel like we, this needs to be vetted back out in committee that vetted this out and ought to respect out of that Parks and Rec Commission. They've already vetted this out and what they came up with is what Counselor Fennessey has been proposing, to add these amendments to it. And for us to vote on it right now, I don't think would be the right thing for us to do, so.
Further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Olson.
I appreciate the amendment, both, but there are certain areas of the city that we don't even know where the right of way is. I'll take Petroski Baseball Field, the bleacher may be in the city right, in the street right of way. So, you may have a bleacher that's not on a private property. And so, I don't think we have enough information to pass this.
Further discussion? Counselor Fennessey?
While I definitely support the, you know, expanding this a little bit, the one thing that I made it clear and the one reason why it kept going back to Parks and Rec four different times, four months, was because I kept telling the Parks and Rec Commission that I wanted their fingerprints on this amendment. I wanted their, I wanted their input, I wanted their thoughts. And I think this, what we have in front of us, has their thoughts in it. I certainly would support this, but if we're going to be adding things above what the Parks and Rec Commission had asked, I would almost rather that it go back to Parks and Rec to have that discussion there, above possibly, you know, amending this even further. I think this, what we have in front of us, is the thoughts, the fingerprints of the Parks and Rec Commission. And if we're going to stray significantly, you know, from that, I would rather have that discussion back at Parks and Rec.
Counselor Sweeney.
I again think it should be vetted back in the committee, not just for most things. This is the purpose of the committee is to vet them. And whether I'm for or against this, I believe it should be vetted back to the committee.
Just to be clear where we are, Counselors, I have not heard a motion to refer. And that would refer to, that would refer the entire ordinance if we did that. Right now, we are discussing the amendment proposed by Counselor Ludwig. Counselor Kern.
As Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, we did spend quite a bit of time on this. As has been alluded, we've had four or five different meetings on it. There's been a lot of time and energy put into it, not only by the staff and the people that are on that commission as well. I do appreciate the amendment that is trying to be pushed forward. We do have a start with something here and we've worked very hard to get to this point. And I do have to agree with Counselor Fennessey that if we do send this back or we vote on this tonight without having the fingerprints put back on by those commissioners, I think it'd be a disservice to the, of what they're doing. Like I said, there's been a lot of time and energy put into this and there's a lot of other things. If we take these amendments and put it into it, it's basically the same, basically the same ordinance that was produced the first time and then sent back and forth four different times. So, I will not be supporting it if we try to add more amendments.
Counselor Vanceickel.
Thank you, Chair. Quickly, just wanted to note that we passed countless amendments on the floor here. But certainly, there was robust discussion in committee. And certainly, my condolences to the Ludwig family in their untimely loss insofar that she had to miss these meetings. And just a quick thank you to the American Lung, who's here today, Pat Mccone, and Charmaine Swan from the Northern Wisconsin Tobacco Coalition in helping us and guiding us forward. But certainly, there was a lot of discussion and even this iteration of the ordinance did not pass unanimously through the parks. So, I certainly support another discussion there. Thank you.
Counselor Ludwig.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Counselor Fennessey.
Just to, just to be clear, what, I guess what I kind of asked this last time is, we have, we have an ordinance here that was completely vetted through the Parks and Rec. One of the reasons why, although I think this makes a ton of sense to expand it if we wanted to go down that road, one of the reasons that I think that that expansion needs to happen in Parks and Rec is because there was, there was many times that in one of the meetings, we had, we had an idea, we had something. And the more and more we flushed that idea out of the, in the committee, it turns out that, you know, if we do this, then this is affected and that's affected. I mean, if we say picnic benches, I mean, where, you know, where we have, you know, picnic benches that would be affected by this. So, that's the, that's the kind of discussion that took four months in Parks and Rec. And I guess I would, I would ask this council to approve this ordinance tonight and any other amendments get re-flushed out through the Parks and Rec Committee.
Seeing no further discussion, there's, but we do have division, so I'll call for a roll call. Vote, please, on the amendment. Does everybody understand the amendment? The vote then is to amend.
Counselor Vanceickel, you are up first.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Bender. Counselor Sweeney. Counselor Fennessey. Counselor Elm. Counselor Ludwig. Counselor Sutherland. Counselor Kern. Counselor Dahlbeck. Counselor Olson.
No.
The motion fails. The main motion. Further discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, please signify, I'm sorry, Counselor Sutherland.
I'm sure I'm behind Warren's head here. Nothing. Question, just so we're clear, the fine is $500, correct? Okay, I just want to, it's a lot of money, but I guess that's what you're going to get for smoking in parks. But there's something we should be discussing on this in the future. It should be when we have huge fines like that for something like this. I think it becomes a vicious cycle when it comes to someone paying a fine, can't pay the fine, then they go to jail for not paying that fine. And something like this, I think in the future, we should look at amounts. When it comes to littering in the woods and municipal forests, I support a high fine, I get that. But something like this that you can buy over the counter at the age of 18, $500 is a lot, so.
Counselor, it is up to $500, not less than $100. So, it's between $100 and $500. Yes. Counselor Fennessey?
If I could just quickly respond to that. The, where that number came from is, we pulled that from the same ordinance, the, whatever it's called, Don't Feed the Ducks, the Geese Ordinance, down on Barker's Island. So, we just mirrored that and we put it in here because it's the same type of an ordinance where it's, it's not an ordinance that's being created, like Counselor Ludwig alluded to, as a gotcha, you know, type of ordinance. We're not creating this to try and handle fines. It's similar to what's happened down on Barker's Island where we create an ordinance, we sign it, and for the most part, people are respectful, you know, of that. And that's what we're hoping to accomplish on this. So, we're not, we're not hoping to handle any fines, you know, hopefully. But that's where the, no less than $100, no more than $500 came from.
Counselor Olson.
I got a silly question. Minimum $100, maximum $500. Cigar is more than a cigarette or a pipe or, I'm serious, think about it. Or would it be up to the police department if somebody's belligerent and you could do it that way, chief? Or, I mean, it may sound silly, but you've got an ordinance that says you can't smoke a cigarette within 50 feet of playground equipment. And you've got, you've got a $400 leeway on, what are we basing it on? Behavior or repeat offenders or?
I'm going to ask the, Counselor Olson, I'm going to ask the city attorney to speak to how that is typically defined.
Okay.
Well, we often do have a range like that. I can't think of a specific ordinance where we've got a range. Yeah, underage drinking, we certainly do. And it is up to the discretion of the officer often. I think Chief Alexander and his department do a real good job of trying to bring some consistency to those. I think they actually schedule these in a manner that a specific dollar amount is arrived at as maybe a heavy suggestion of, for lack of a better term. But I think you'll see consistency, even though there's a significant range. We certainly do in the other ones where there is a range like that.
So, if we use the underage drinking ordinance as an example, there's a range. I don't know exactly what it is. There's a, you know, the bottom number and the high number. We typically set the original offense somewhere in the area of the minimum and from there graduate it per future violations up to the maximum. Ultimately, then they go to the city attorney who has the discretion to, you know, enter into a different type of agreement when somebody wants to resolve it.
Counselor Vanceickel.
Just in that same vein, Chief Alexander, there's a lot of ways in where we know an ordinance on its face doesn't deter people from an action. But sometimes with the best of intentions, we hope a fine will deter people from those actions. So, in the same vein as tobacco, we have, we have an ordinance on the books around small amounts of marijuana. What is that fine structure?
I believe it starts at about $250 for the possession of marijuana.
Starts at 200, okay. And what is the upper echelon?
The max is 500.
The max is 500, okay, thank you.
Further discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, I don't know if there is division. I'm just going to call for a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 12.2 is an ordinance introduced by Building Inspection and Environmental Services Division of Public Works amending Chapter 104, Property Maintenance and Housing Code by creating a new section, 266, Composting and Compost Piles.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Counselor Vanceickel, your light is still on. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. And we have no further business and are adjourned. Thank you. Is there objection? Counselor Bender, please. Could you hold on adjourned for just one second? We don't have further business. I'm not sure, I should be keeping this open here for the, Counselors, we are adjourned.